Good evening, everyone. This regular meeting of the mayor and council is now called to order. Roll call. All council members are present. Please rise for a pledge of allegiance followed by an invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Powell, will you pray for us, please?
Let us pray. Father, we are grateful to have this opportunity together as a community. Lord, we are in the season of thankfulness. Lord, there is something so special that you would bless the people who call this their home to be Social Circle. It is a wonder, Lord. And for that, we have to be grateful. For those of us who get to come and share in it, Lord, we want to do it too. And all the things that make it great, the beauty, the quiet, the history, and more, the opportunity. We just give you thanks for all those things. Lord, we pray over our council tonight as a lot of zoning decisions are to be made, Lord. And we just ask you to give them your wisdom and your ability to make good decisions so that we can be thankful for all these things in the future, Lord. Bless them, watch over them, watch over those who work here and those who protect this place, Lord. And we thank you, Jesus.
Amen. All right, I do have a few announcements. All of the announcements that I have tonight take place in this, in the room we're in now, the community room. First of all, there's the meeting that we are in tonight. Municipal Court, November 19th at 1:00 PM. Planning Commission has been canceled. It was scheduled for November 20th at 6:00 PM. Thanksgiving holidays for the city, November 27 and 28. Our council... Can you hear me better? Or can you hear me? Council work session, December 4th, 6:30. Historic preservation meeting, December 9th at 6:00 PM. Downtown Development Authority meeting, December 11th at 9:00 AM. And our next council meeting, December 16th, 6:30 PM. That brings us to presentations, employee introduction and recognition.
I don't believe we have any this evening.
Okay. Downtown rundown?
Is Amber here?
Yeah, she's in the back.
Okay.
This is our rundown on November. I'm going to start with the Christmas tree lighting. Join us in this Friday in Friendship Park at 6:00 PM for the annual lighting of the tree. This year, we are combining our farmer's market with the tree lighting, so we will have 20 vendors that will be set up in the market area from 4:00 to 7:00 PM. On the backside of the park, we will have photos with Santa, the Grinch, letters to Santa, ornament making, and free hot chocolate for our visitors. We'll have hay rides set up on the front part of the park and a few more vendors there. This year, we are starting a new tradition of inviting a nonprofit organization to be recognized at our event. Caleb's Calls is our featured nonprofit this year. It was started by Kara and Marissa Walton after their son Caleb received a heart transplant at just six months old. Each year, Caleb's Calls chooses a child who's been diagnosed with an illness and they have a benefit car show for the family. So, the child that they had this year, her name is Willow Crowe. She's five years old. And she has been diagnosed with Langerhand cell histiocytosis. It's a form of leukemia. So, we're excited that Willow is going to be in attendance on Friday night. She's going to do the honors of lighting the tree for us. So, we are very excited about that. It'll be a fun, feel-good family event, so we hope everyone can make plans to join us. And then, on Friday, December 5th at 6:00 PM, we will have our annual Christmas parade through downtown. This year, we have 28 entries, and the theme is Favorite Christmas Song. Before the parade begins, the city will have a cookie decorating station, and then Masonic Lodge will have fire pits set up for smores in the area in front of and beside the tire station. Social 1832 will be hosting Santa from 5:00 to 8:00 in their business for free photos. And then, last on the list is Secret Santa. So, since it's Christmas time again, for those who may not know, this is a program that Chief Sadeel and I run for the city each year. We partner with Social Circle City Schools to help local families in need of Christmas assistance. We rely on donations to fund the program and are extremely thankful to all of those that donate throughout the year. We are excited this year to be providing Christmas for 37 local children. So, we shop specifically for each child to make sure that they get items that they need and take the burden off of those families. So, we're very excited about that. That's all I have for tonight.
Any questions for Amber? Thank you, Amber.
Thank you.
Okay, citizens' requests. We didn't have any. Do we have any council requests?
I have one. I would like for us to look at our animal ordinance here in Social Circle.
In what regards? The animal control work we have is guided by Walton County. We have to adopt whatever Walton County has because of animal control and in the service delivery agreement we have.
Well, there is an issue at hand, and I would like for us to look at it to see what we can do in City of Social Circle to protect our community.
Okay.
Okay. Any other requests? I'll entertain a motion to, for agenda approval.
Mayor, we need to make some adjustments to the agenda this evening just in the interest of everybody's time here tonight. The way the agenda is currently published, we have a series of eight public hearings, and then we will have a series of eight different votes related to those eight public hearings. I would propose that, for those who don't want to stay through all eight public hearings, I would propose that we group the votes immediately after each relevant public hearing. Okay? So, in other words, so, public hearing number one, actually won't need to hear that one because that one has been withdrawn by the applicant, so you just need to accept that withdrawal. Item number two will still be, number two of the zoning agenda items, as is number three. Public hearing number four, the vote will be for zoning agenda items four, five, six, and seven. And then, number eight is its own vote. Does that make sense? That way, people don't have to stay for the whole thing if they are only here for one item.
All right. That brings us to the public hearing.
I'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the amended agenda from Eric's notes.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Nathan and a second from Steve. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion passes. Agenda is approved. Okay, for our public hearings tonight. Keep me straight, Susan. Okay, tonight, we have eight public hearings tonight. As the agenda item is brought forth, city staff will present the application. The applicant will give their presentation, 10 minutes total. Then, a public hearing will be opened. Then, anyone registered to speak in favor of the application will be called to the podium, give their name and address, and limited to 10 minutes total, not each. Then, anyone registered to speak against the application will be called to the podium, give their name and address, and are limited to 10 minutes total, not each. Once the applicant has been given an opportunity for rebuttal, with any time remaining, the public hearing will close. Please remember that these hearings are an opportunity for you to voice your opinion and not question and answer session with the mayor and council. So, comments on it, please. The first one, as Mr. Taylor mentioned, was a rezon withdrawn by the applicant. I entertain a motion to accept that.
Second.
A motion from Steve and a second from Tyson. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, that brings us to a rezon application 2025-014. A rezon of 662 Wildwood Drive. Ms. Davis, will you give us a report on that one?
Yes. This request is to rezon tax parcels SC-090018B00 and SC-090010B00 from agricultural to residential District 15 for the purpose of developing a 24-lot, single-family detached unit subdivision. The site plan that was submitted with the application is there on your screen. This proposed development would also include tax parcels SC-090019 and SC-090020. However, both of those parcels are already zoned R15, so they're not included in the rezon request. The intent of the development is to meet housing needs within the city limits while also complying with the city's comprehensive plan and future land use map, as well as feedback received from the community. Because this applicant originally submitted a rezon request that included these properties back in February of 2025. That case number was REZ2025003. They attempted to rezon from ag in R15 to RMD, or residential medium density, for a proposed townhome development. However, the applicant ultimately withdrew their request prior to mayor and council issuing a decision on their application. The current proposal appears to attempt to address concerns that were expressed by the community in the previous application by removing the townhome aspect and focusing solely on single-family detached use. As shown on the proposed site plan included in your packets as Exhibit A, the proposed development would consist of approximately 24 single-family detached homes along with an open space stormwater, open space and stormwater pond as well. As part of the permitting process, the applicant would be required to submit preliminary and final plats for approval, as well as civil plans to be reviewed, as well to ensure that all development and dimensional standards are being met as outlined by the UDC. There would also be a community association as part of this proposed development as well. The applicant held a community meeting virtually on October 6th of 2025. There were four members of the public present that called into the meeting. During the meeting, while it was acknowledged that the new proposal was a significant decrease in density to what was originally proposed as a part of REZ2025003, a few attendees indicated that they would prefer the development to have even fewer homes, with potentially two-acre minimums as well. There were questions asked about existing easements and stormwater management also, to which the applicant stated that development would be serviced via underground power and would not affect the current power pole easement. And the proposed location of the drainage pond at the front of the property was intended to accommodate natural flows by placing it at the lowest elevation. The meeting lasted about 30 minutes. As outlined in Table 2.1.5 of the UDC, the minimum lot size for properties within the R15 zoning designation is 15,000 square feet, which is about .34 acres. While there are similar zonings as to what is being requested adjacent to the proposed development, the average lot size in the area tends to be greater than the minimum that is required by R15 zonings. Hickory Meadows subdivision, which is adjacent to the proposed development, has an average lot size of about .43 acres, while similar properties in the immediate vicinity of Long Wildwood Drive have an average lot size of approximately .6 acres. Please note that the formula used to calculate the average lot size of similar properties along Wildwood Drive did not include the applicant's properties, nor those with a lot size greater than one acre. There's also ag zoning in the area and directly adjacent to the applicant's properties as well. Both ag and R15 allow for single-family detached dwellings as a permitted use. There's currently a six-inch water main in the area. However, there is some level of concern as to whether or not there's adequate volume and pressure needed to support the proposed development. And the concern about adequate water volume also includes that is needed to support fire flow as well. Additionally, there is some gravity-fed sewer located on the property. However, the developer would be responsible for relocating that line closer to the property line prior to beginning any construction. With regard to stormwater management, there are drainage issues already present on the property, so ditches would need to be improved and curb and gutter would need to be installed as part of the proposed development. The roadways are currently only 14.5 feet wide and would be unable to support emergency vehicle traffic, as well as school bus traffic for the proposed development. The developer would be responsible to addressing all infrastructure concerns and required improvements. So, staff, wrong way. Staff did recommend approval with conditions. The first of which is that the minimum lot sizes and setback requirements for the proposed development shall be equivalent to those outlined in Table 2.1.5 of the Unified Development Code for Residential District 25. Number of lots for the proposed development shall be capped at 15 lots. The developer would be responsible for the portion of Wildwood Drive that lies directly in front of the proposed development, bringing that up to current standards outlined in Section 9.2 of the UDC to include installation of curb and gutter. And number four, the applicant must obtain a letter from the city's engineer to confirm that utilities have the capacity for the project to include fire flow prior to beginning any development. The planning commission recommended approval of the request to rezon from ag to R15 with the recommended conditions provided by staff. Any questions for me?
So, planning commission didn't add any additional requirements?
Correct.
Any other questions? All right, I'll call upon the applicant.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Andrea Gray. This evening, I have the pleasure of representing JMJMS Properties in its request to rezon 10.09 acres from ag to R15 for a residential development. As Ashley explained, the property is located on Wildwood Drive. It's bordered to its east by CSX Railroad and then to the west by Wildwood Drive. It also connects directly to the Hickory Meadows subdivision. Here, you can see the property's zonings. You see the two parcels that we've highlighted with arrows there. Those are the two that we're requesting to rezon to R15. The two that are closest to the road that my client owns are already zoned R15. And you can see that the subdivision, both across from the railroad tracks and then abutting the property directly, are also zoned R15. Future land use map designates this area to be appropriate for neighborhoods, which is what we are proposing with an R15 zoning. We do have a long history with this project. As Ashley mentioned, we did start requesting a 90-home townhome development on this property. And after meeting and talking with the neighbors, realized that that just was not the direction that they wanted us to go and that we wanted to be good neighbors, and so we did not want to go in that direction either. So, we withdrew our application before it got to you all and redrew it as a 24-home, single-family, traditional neighborhood development. We did have a community meeting, and four of our adjoining property owners did attend that meeting, and we were able to have productive conversations. Of course, they still would like to have a lower-density development in this area, which, you know, we heard from them. We had the planning commission meeting back in October, and we were approved for R15 with the conditions that Ashley mentioned. Here is the site plan that we proposed in our application with the 24 homes. We've got a nice, you know, a nice entryway with three cul-de-sacs. We had, you know, a mail kiosk area, sidewalk, street lights, all the things you have in a traditional neighborhood development. Agreed, of course, to meet all the ordinance requirements with regard to the size of the homes, the lot sizes, two-car garages, nice exterior finishes, no vinyl, no metal siding with accents of brick and stone-water tables. And here's a representative photograph of what the homes in this development would look like, meeting all those requirements. And again, we did have the community meeting on October the 6th, virtually. The planning commission conditions that were approved, we objected to those staff conditions during that meeting. The challenge for us is taking the development down from 24 homes down to 15 really makes it unattainable for us because you still have the same infrastructure that's required. And so, you're still building the same streets and the same utilities are coming in, but you're spreading that cost over fewer homes, which just, from a business model, doesn't work well for us. And then, in thinking through the conversations with our neighbors, the people we heard from at the planning commission, my client really, for the second time, rethought this development again. And so, tonight, I have a new concept planned, bear with me, to show to you that I think you will see as favorable. But, in kind of re-envisioning this, my client is proposing that we take the, it's just under 11 acres total, and divide it into two-acre lots instead of doing a neighborhood, instead of having cul-de-sacs and sidewalks and all of those things, and have each of these lots have an entrance off of Wildwood Drive. So, kind of taking it back to a more rural structure, this is really what our neighbors were asking us to do. And I've never seen a developer in my career be willing to go to this link, to go from 90 townhomes back to five two-acre lots. But this is what he really feels like is a good fit here and would work well with the area and with, you know, what he's trying to do here with this property. So, this is our request, a little bit different than we started with, is to rezon the 10.09 acres to R15, so same zoning, but we ask that you condition it on being a minimum of two-acre lots. So, not a subdivision, just really subdividing this property into the two-acre lots. Oops, and then with that, I'm going backwards. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So, with the two-acre lots, will the house style change?
We would still be required to meet the ordinance requirements, which is the 1600 brick, you know, brick and stone accent, no vinyl siding, no metal.
So, a similar product to what y'all were proposing.
Yes, just different lots.
Okay.
Questions?
Any other questions?
So, we're going from 24 lots to?
Five.
Anything else?
Will all the other stipulations remain?
Well, we wouldn't need to do curb and gutter on the road, right? Because we're just going to be doing driveway entrances onto Wildwood. And so, but yeah, we would have to obviously work to get the utilities connected and make whatever improvements to get water and sewer there.
So, basically, everything except for the roadway improvements is what you're saying?
Hmm.
Yeah, I think that, didn't we do that somewhere else? Did they still have the sidewalks in front of theirs anywhere?
Not when we done this.
When they split it up, we didn't do that. Okay.
So, with the number of lots that the applicant is proposing, it would not have to go through a preliminary plat or final plat. Since it's at the five-lot threshold, it could still be done administratively, so we don't have to go through like a whole big silver review until we get to the building permit phase where it would show the tabs.
Yes. All right, with that, I will open the public hearing. We do have... Okay. And you can reserve that time for rebuttal. All right, we have, looks like, three people signed up to speak in favor. First, Andrea? Okay. And I may butcher this name, Tyler. I can't read the last name on here. Yes.
We'll reserve time for rebuttal.
Okay, thank you. And David? Can you see that? Okay. All right. All right, and then we have to speak against Wendell Pitts. For the record, please, just give us your name and address, please.
Wendell Pitts, 577 Wildwood Drive, Social Circle. My problem is the 14-foot right roadway, the 30-foot total road right away. And there's not enough room to pull a car in and out of the road there, especially where they're talking about. And, you know, I don't understand why there's any discussion about that. And you can't take my property and make a road. And nobody else is going to sell property either.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pitts. William Wilkins? William Wilkins?
Okay, I've been, I live at 343 Wildwood Drive. I've been living here for 28 years. And the property you're proposing building on behind me is right behind Burgess's property back there. And I have a couple of springs back there that they're going to be going through that it's not allowed. We're going to, I've got ponds that are going to go dry if they go through the springs. Also, I want to ask about widening Wildwood, Lakewood, and Hickory Drive. Because it's got no other way to get traffic in there. Those big trucks coming in there, they can't get in there. There's no trucks go through Wildwood Drive anyway. There's no truck signs all over that place. And I oppose it. It's, they're already back there making noise. And they're right there on my fence line, right on my fence line. And I just, I oppose it. I oppose the hell out of it. This place is a peaceful place. I've lived here, law, I moved out here because it was peaceful. I'm a veteran. I've got PTSD and a severe depressive disorder. And I like to be left alone, and I won't be left alone if those houses are built back there. I've got like, I divided it up, and it'd be 24 houses will take up 3.395 acres. And Burgess has 81.501 acres back there. And it's, it's, most of my property is like a wetland. And it's against the law to build on the wetland. And I'm opposing it as much as I can. I'll be in touch with some people eventually. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Do you have any, you have time reserved for comment?
Appreciate Mr. Pitts and Mr. Wilkins speaking tonight. And you were the reason that we have made changes to this plan. And it's, you know, you're hearing it for the first time tonight, so I certainly understand, you know, your notes not reflecting what we're proposing. But, you know, again, drastic change, five homes, basically, you know, 10 cars being added to the road instead of, you know, 24 times 2. You know, we will not be building on any springs. That's, you know, it's a requirement when we file the building plans to make sure that our homes perk. Being on the two acres are significant buffers between our homes and the existing neighbors. And I think what we're proposing today really fits well within the character of the area, and will have a very minimal impact on our neighbors. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
As far as the road, how are we with emergency vehicles, fire trucks getting in there?
Right, I mean, it's a narrow road, but, you know, it's a narrow road that five additional homes would have a very minimal impact on as it exists now.
All right, thank you, Ms. Gray. Okay, I'm going to back up a little bit. We still had some time remaining. If there's anyone else that did not sign up that wishes to speak against, Tyson, can you give me the time? Okay. C nine.
Okay, sorry.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Olivet James Robinson. My address is ten thirty Shadow Creek Way, Greensboro, Georgia. I own property on Wildwood. I have lived on Wildwood all of my life growing up. And anyone that lives in that area knows that when you're turning on to Hickory, to Wildwood, those are very narrow streets. You cannot even pass another vehicle in your standard vehicle, much less construction trucks. I know some of those people that may be living there will have children, therefore school buses will need to have access. Where are they going to turn around? We also have property at the end of Wildwood where it begins the dirt road going into Newton County. I'm sure that will become a turnaround spot. You will be infringing on the livelihood of citizens that have lived on that quiet street all their lives. They are now in their late seventies, mid seventies, and should enjoy life rather than having to be burdened with what's happening on my street. It may not seem a lot to you, but to the individuals that live on that street, it is a huge change. Thank you.
Ms. Gray, response?
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. I guess all I can say is that we respectfully disagree. We really don't feel that five additional homes would have a significant impact on what is already occurring on Wildwood Drive. And again, my client, you know, is excited about being a good neighbor and has made significant changes to his plans to make sure that he was. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Ms. Gray. All right, with that, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for
With, as far as the road does go, maybe it's Ashley, I guess, emergency vehicles, what is the plan to get them back there? Is there one?
I am not sure. We did just receive this amended plan this afternoon, so I think I would probably have to defer that probably to the fire chief.
Is that something you can't answer tonight, Ken?
I would agree with Ms. Gray's statement. I had some, a lot of reservation when we started talking about a subdivision, about being able to get in and out with the widths. Seven and, depending upon where you're at on that road, it's anywhere from fourteen and a half to about seven and a half, depending upon the further you get up, the narrower it gets. So I would agree. I had some concerns when it was a subdivision, but it's five single-family homes, it's no different than any of the homes across the street as far as making access.
Okay. So just as information, I went out there with a wheel a few weeks ago, and as point of comparison, I live on Lakewood, almost at the corner of Wildwood. And I measured the width of Lakewood at that point, and it was eighteen feet of asphalt across the street. I went down to the curve at, at Wildwood, just past Hickory, and that was eighteen feet. But it does taper to about sixteen feet at the entrance to this subdivision. Now, I will say, one of the other items that you will be hearing tonight includes a relocation of Wildwood Drive, if that, if that gets approved as well. And so from the planning and zoning recommendations and the staff recommendations, what would still be included in their new proposed plan?
So with...
It would still be the infrastructure to get to those houses, or not the sewer, but the water, would have to make sure that that would be up to par, which is...
Right, so basically, it would be on the burden of the developer to, within our water ordinance, I can't remember off the top of my head how many feet it is, but if they're within so many feet of a water line, the developer is responsible for getting to that utility, and that's for water and sewer. So it wouldn't go through the rigor, the more rigorous process that like a true subdivision over five lots would go through. So if this was six lots we were talking about, they'd have to do a preliminary plat and a final plat and, you know, look at utility lines and things like that. But for this, they're just, they're solely responsible for getting to those lines, wherever those lines may be.
And so none of the other conditions would apply necessarily to the new project, correct?
By default, if we did go with what the applicant was proposing, I mean, the lot size and setback requirements would also apply. And the cap would apply, but other than that, we wouldn't really, staff has, staff wouldn't require the other two conditions about improvements of Wildwood or, staff wouldn't recommend that, or the engineer letters or anything like that.
Okay.
So what about the drainage that these five houses are going to cause, I mean?
Like stormwater?
Stormwater.
So we would look at that during the building review, but it just wouldn't be as, there's not as much of an impact because there's significantly less impervious surface and grading being done when it's, when it's a house. So they're going to be disturbing way less than an acre, but we still look at that as a part of the building, building permit review.
Any question?
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the R fifteen zoning with the five homes as presented here tonight.
Okay, have a motion from Mr. Boyd, is there a second?
Second.
A second from Councilmember Shelton. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
All in favor?
All right, Ms. Davis, that brings us to special use two oh two five zero zero eight.
Susan, may I? Thank you. So while she's pulling that back up, I'll go ahead and get it into my report. The special use request is to allow for a proposed data center campus under light industrial zoning across three tracts of land totaling about ninety-six acres. Under section two point three point one of the UDC, data centers are permitted outright under heavy industrial, however, under light industrial, data centers do require a special use approval. Given the zoning of the surrounding properties in this area, along with the proposal submitted, LI is, or light industrial is the least intensive zoning that would accomplish the proposed plan. The property is currently adjacent to the General Mills property and across the street from what we, what we are, right next door to the P and K development, too. As shown on the proposed site plan, which is in your packets as Exhibit A, the proposed data center development would be constructed across the three previously mentioned parcels, totaling approximately ninety-six acres and would consist of four buildings, each totaling about two hundred and fifty thousand square feet. While there is currently a Georgia Power substation adjacent to the proposed development, Exhibit A shows an additional one thousand square foot substation that would be developed as a part of the proposed project as well. Under section two point one point five of the UDC, the maximum impervious surface ratio allowed is forty percent. And based on Exhibit A, the current project, projected ISR is about twenty-six percent, so just over half of that. The proposed project also appears to meet the site standards for industrial uses as outlined in section three point four of the UDC. If approved, all site development requirements will be reviewed during the development review phase of the project prior to any construction beginning. While formal traffic study was not required as a part of the application nor a DRI, the applicant did provide an estimated traffic analysis in their letter of intent, which is Exhibit B in your packets. The analysis indicates that while light industrial uses typically experience a traffic increase of between two and ten trucks per one thousand square feet of building space, the data center is estimated to be less than half of the lower end of that spectrum. Exhibit B also provides insight into operations and estimated utility usage as well. The applicant has indicated that while the proposed data centers would operate twenty-four seven, there would be no excess noise or odors emitted from the site, and due to the nature of the operations, would be significantly less commercial vehicle traffic generated compared to other LI uses. The anticipated build-out of the project would be over a four to five-year period, with the first building being operational within two to three years. As it pertains to estimated utility usage, Exhibit B indicates that anticipated peak water usage during warmer months would be approximately one million gallons per day, with the peak sewer usage being about four hundred thousand gallons per day. However, the applicant has indicated that as technology progresses, they are committed to implementing more water-efficient systems to minimize resource demands. Furthermore, the applicant has indicated that they are aware that special use approval does not guarantee the applicant nor the end user of any utility service rights, and they are committed to working with the city and other applicable utility providers while being sensitive to the community's concerns. And this is all in that letter of intent. There is currently a twelve-inch water main along East High Tower Trail located on the same side of the road as the proposed development. However, concerning sewer, the city may need to obtain an easement from the developer as future plans are to remove the current pump station in that area and install gravity sewer to flow to that area from the regional pump station located by P and K Logistics. City Police has requested that public safety and the developers have a conversation regarding site security and traffic control in the area prior to any construction beginning. A community meeting was held virtually on October seventh, however, aside from the applicant, there were no other attendees. I'd also like to mention that this board did approve, or this council did approve warehouse on this site right before I started, so that was probably about three years ago. So that would have significant truck traffic as well. We did not put that in our, in our staff report, but this would technically be a less intensive, at least, traffic use on this site. So staff did recommend approval of the request for a special use to allow for a data center development under light industrial zoning with the following conditions. One, the maximum parking spaces shall be calculated at one parking space for, per seven thousand square foot of building space. Two, in addition to the two hundred foot natural buffer shown on the proposed site plan along East High Tower Trail, the buffer must consist of trees that are a minimum of four caliper inches and/or at least ten foot in height at the time of planting. Three, power substations shall be screened from view only if visible from the right away, with a dense evergreen hedge that provides an opaque visual buffer. Said hedge shall be no less than twelve feet in height at the time of planting. And four, the applicant must obtain a letter from city's engineers to confirm that city utilities have the capacity for the project prior to beginning any development. The Planning Commission recommended denial of the request for the special use to allow for data center under light industrial zoning.
Questions for Ashley?
Welcome back, by the way.
Oh, thanks.
So why, they just denied it for, I mean, because it was a warehouse approved for that?
The Planning Commission has been requesting these data centers to provide some letters to the best of their ability for utilities. Again, this phrase was used a lot at that Planning Commission meeting. We have sort of a chicken and egg situation. A lot of utility providers won't give those, those types of letters, especially power, until the zoning action has been taken. And Planning Commission was hesitant to make recommendations without those letters, so we were kind of battling on who was first. But I do believe we provided, the applicant provided letters from Georgia Power this afternoon, I believe, or this morning.
Yeah, the, they submitted a letter from Georgia Power that just indicates that Georgia Power is actively working with the end user at this site.
But that was, that was kind of my interpretation of why that was denied.
All right, thank you, Ashley. All right, I'll call upon the applicant. Or the applicant's representative.
Thank you. Yeah, sorry, I always have a PowerPoint, so. Well, thank you, good evening again, Andrea Gray. I have Rich Moduleski with me this evening. We're representing Dermody tonight and the request for a special use permit for a data center. Let's see if I can get it going in the right direction. There we go. Dermody has a long history, over sixty years of a great track record with industrial-type development all over this country, internationally and regionally here in the southeast as well. Here tonight, I've got Rich Moduleski with me up here, we've got Wes Hardy in the audience along with David Sprinkle. And again, I'm Andrea Gray, the attorney. Here's the site map of where the property is located. Importantly is that the property is already in the city limits of social circle. We are not requiring an annexation for this project. You can see we're located on East High Tower Trail, and we're directly adjacent to General Mills and other warehouse developments. Our total property is ninety-five point one two acres. Here you can see we're comprised of three different parcels combined together. You'll also see here, they're already zoned for light industrial, as are the adjoining properties in this area. So once again, for this project, we do not require it to be rezoned, we already fit well within the area. Watership protection map here, we are outside that area, so we don't need any special accommodations, variances or other development accommodations for that area. Future land use map, you'll see we're here in the gray industrial character area along with all the adjoining properties around us. And again, we're not requiring a character use change for this project either. Here's the plan that Ashley referenced, this is the plan that was approved when the property was rezoned to light industrial. You can see it's a very large, one point two two million square foot warehouse development with six hundred and twelve auto parking spaces, five hundred and fifty-four tractor-trailer spaces, very minimal buffer, buildings pushed right up against the road. There was actually a mass grading permit issued for this project back in, I think, June of this last year that includes this exact site plan. So work was, was just about to be underway until Dermody came about with this data center project. So I'm going to let Rich take over and tell you a little bit about the data center project.
Thank you, Rich Moduleski with Dermody. Oops, going the wrong way. So as Andrea mentioned, we, we tried to have our site plan be in conformance or similar to the warehouse that was already approved. The square footages are almost the same, and if you look at the footprint on the, there we go, if you look at the two footprints overlaid, they're almost in the same exact area. But I think what's worth mentioning here is we're not requesting any variances, our site plan is completely done to the current ordinance, and we, we plan on strictly adhering to that ordinance in the UDC for the development. As you will see, though, we have much larger setbacks, and we are going to maintain the buffer and greenery in the back. Our detention, water detention is almost in the same exact location as the previously proposed warehouse. I think one interesting thing to note about this... Um, I think one is interesting thing to note about this project, uh and we did produce a report that we shared with planning. We have copies here, if you would like it, but we had a professional engineering firm study the traffic of the proposed warehouse use versus the data center. The, the result of that analysis is that on a daily basis, uh, the data center use versus the warehouse use will reduce trip counts by six hundred and twelve cars a day. So it's six hundred and twelve less trips coming in and out of that site for the data center use as composed, as opposed to the warehouse use. Andrea also mentioned, or maybe it was Ashley, touched on the reduction in truck traffic. The truck, truck traffic is gonna be less than a tenth of what was proposed if it was gonna be a one point two million square foot uh warehouse. Um, so in addition to reducing the trip traffic, we're also reducing truck traffic. We've tried to, on our site plan, um, increase the buffers away from the road and uh are happy to accommodate the requests from planning around uh ensuring there's greenery on High Tower Trail. More importantly, the jobs associated with data centers, although it may not be as many jobs created in a warehouse, traditionally, these are all six-figure, high-paying, full-time jobs. Um, some combination of contractors and full-time employees uh from the end user, but it, just a terrific, uh terrific salary for, for um the constituents that live in the area. Um, additionally, the capital investment in data centers as compared to warehouse is probably at a minimum of ten X. Uh, it's an unbelievable, really generational opportunity in terms of revenue for the city of social circle. As I'm sure most towns are going through, uh, that revenue can be put to good use in a lot of different places. Um, and in addition to that, let me just keep going. We wanted to talk about the staff recommendations. As a part of that engineering report that we submitted, um, the applicant, the end user who's interested in this site uh was um very specific in what they were studying from a parking perspective. The, you know, we would politely request that we can um have one space per four thousand two hundred and fifty feet. Uh, at this number, we are reducing the number of parking spaces on the site by three hundred and sixty-two spots. So the previously approved plan was for, I think, six hundred and twelve or roughly six hundred parking spaces, and we're reducing that by, you know, over three hundred and fifty in, in uh, uh, as well as, you know, again, removing all of the trailer parking and trucks coming in and out. Um, we're totally fine with the trees and the screening of the substation, and obviously, you can't build the data center without the utilities, so we're, we think it's absolutely reasonable that um, the city is, is on board and approves the water and sewer use before, before construction starts. Uh, with that, we'll answer questions. I'm sorry, can you get me back to?
I don't think I can from here. Um, are you asking about the, the carve-out already by Georgia Power?
Yes. Yes. Yes, sir. That, that, that substation is being built regardless of the data center project. That, that substation is to support residential and commercial growth in, in the surrounding areas. It just is coincidental. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, with that, uh, I will open the public hearing. We have a number of people's uh to speak in favor. Uh, first being Ms. Gray.
Uh, I'll, I'll decline. I'm in favor.
Okay. Sorry, I'm terrible with these names up here tonight. Susan, can you tell us?
I think it's um
Yeah.
our attorney, Mr.
Uh, it's Moduleski.
Moduleski.
Imagine me in kindergarten trying to spell that.
Okay, and then it looks like Chris.
Miles or?
Miller, maybe? Thank you. David Sprinkle. Thank you. Xavier Stewart.
I reserve as well.
Thank you. Wes Hardy.
Nothing to add for me. Thank you.
Okay. Jim E Y R T, maybe?
Nothing to add.
Thank you. And Julian Brown. Okay, thank you. All right, now we'll ask for those that are here to speak against, and we've had two people to sign up. Tawana Gilbert?
Uh, I suppose I'll pass.
Okay, thank you. And then James Yums?
Evans.
Evans, okay. I was way off on that one, wasn't I?
Absolutely, Mr. Keener. My name is James Evans. I'll, I live at eighteen forty-five Darrell Drive. Thank you for the opportunity for speaking tonight. Looks like there's gonna be a decision. Will it be a data center or warehouse? I personally don't want either one of them, but that's not my, my decision that y'all's. One thing that's very concerning is that the onslaught of data centers that have popped up, not just here, but everywhere. And the major concerns that keep popping up is power and water. It's in the city limits of social circle. Can y'all provide the water? Can George Power provide the power? I don't think so. Directly across the street on East High Tower, which the map is showing parts of it, are livestock and people. Data centers per, produce noise twenty-four seven, low frequency and high frequency. So studies, I don't know, have been made or have not been made. What are the long-term effects of all this? Um, I don't know, but once you commit that changing the zoning is gonna be locked in. The fact that it started off as a warehouse, and now it's gonna go to a data center, it's been speculation who's the end user. A lot of people are using non-disclosure agreements to hide behind all that, so just curiosity, who's gonna be the, the final end user to go in out there? I think a lot of people would like to know that. East High Tower, we're talking about Dart and General Mills. For y'all who live out here, which we all do, just about all of us, East High Tower is a very skinny two-lane road. Eighty thousand pound semis are going back and forth, and I'm now kinda giving a favor for the reduction going from warehouse to a data center. But East High Tower needs to be widened already. You got the C S X railroad on one side, so that's gonna limit how wide it can get, but it needs to be taken care of now. Whether it's a data center or whether it's gonna be eighteen-wheelers for the warehouse going in. But the concern for the noise, for the people, for the livestock, water, for the electricity, I just don't think it could be done. And how many other data centers have y'all, as a group, approved that are inside the city limits of social circle? I get confused. I don't know if it's one, two, three. How, how many of y'all approved in the last few months? It, you know, no change is coming. I understand that. But uh, having another data center on top of what everything else is gonna be thrown out here, that's just the wrong decision to make, in my opinion. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Ms. Gray, have a comment?
Thank you, uh, Mr. Evans. Um, uh, we frequently um, uh, are in each other's company at, a number of these meetings, but I, I guess, with regard to his comments about data centers in generally, I just encourage you to look at each one on their own merits, right? And when you're considering our request for a special use permit for this site, consider the merits of this site. And that is that what we're proposing is a significantly lower intense use than what is already approved here on the site. The site's already in the city limits. It's already appropriately zoned. It's not in, it's in the correct character area, and so it's a good fit here for this project. With regard to the road improvement concerns, we have reserved on the site plan uh room for future right-of-way expansion on East High Tower Trail. We worked that into our plan, knowing that that's kind of the future of this area, right? Particularly if this were to be, have been the um, you know, industrial warehouse, that would have required significant more improvements. But we've made accommodations thinking forward into the future um for that. Um, and again, looking at the merits of this case, a data center compared to a warehouse, we have data centers in this community. We've seen what those tax revenues can do for our school as they grow, and I just personally can't speak enough to the benefits of those tax revenues coming in, not just for the city. Everybody thinks about the city, but over sixty percent of those go to your schools um and improve the quality of life for our children and the education of the people who, who grew up here. Um, sorry, Rich, I'll let you speak to anything else you wanted to address there.
No, you hit all the major points. I'll reserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll back up for a moment. I think uh we had some time left for people wanting to speak against. Did we not, Tyson?
Seven twenty-eight.
Seven minutes and twenty-eight seconds left. If anyone would wish to um speak against. Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council for a decision.
So what's the difference at a parking, parking spaces?
So I did some rough calculations really fast with my calculator. Um, I figured that question would come up. Um, so based off of what we have been um conditioning on these data centers, uh, I looked at a few of our action notices that we had sent out um recently. We've been doing thirty-five per building. Now, with their proposal, um, that would only be a hundred and forty spaces for this site. Um, with some of the other bigger sites, it was significantly more because they had more buildings. With what um the applicant is requesting, we, we moved that ratio to the one space per forty, uh, four thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. That would be about two hundred and thirty-five uh parking spaces. So there is a significant difference between what we have been doing versus um the ratio that their engineer is saying that they absolutely have to have.
It's four buildings?
Yes. And they're each, um, based off the site plan, they're each about two hundred and fifty thousand square feet, so it's for, I don't know if that was just for math's sake, but that's a million square feet. Um, oh, yeah, okay. I, I figured they would be, but I didn't wanna speak for the applicant.
So it's about fifty-nine parking spaces per building?
Yeah, roughly.
So I'll make a motion to approve and allow the uh applicant's um spaces per square feet. What you got?
I wanna add noise dampers to all the equipment. Um, no hidden costs to the city utility-wise, and anyway, if it affects anybody's well in the area, it's at the developer's expense to replace it.
I'm in the motion to accept the, the recommendations.
A motion from Tyson. Steve, is that your second? Second from uh Councilmember Shelton. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. All right, brings us to the annexation, uh, two oh two five zero zero six. Ms. Davis.
Susan, do you mind? So um, in regards to this annexation, Georgia Stroud's Creek Land LLC is requesting to annex tax parcel zero one two two zero zero seven A, zero one two two zero zero seven B, zero one two two zero zero one, zero one two two zero zero one A, and uh plus or minus six hundred and eighty-four acres of tax parcel zero one 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 zero zero five into the city limits of social circle as a part of a proposal for a potential data center development. Please note that a portion of tax parcel zero one 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 zero zero five is already located within the city limits. As part of the proposal of approved, the applicant would also be seeking a future land use map amendment, rezone, and special use approval as well. These parcels are currently located in the unincorporated portion of Newton County along Hollis Road, Highway eleven, Wildwood Drive, Lakewood Drive, and the old Stroud's Creek Road. And are uh directly adjacent to property currently within the city limits. The requested annexation as proposed appears that it would address a specific need uh by promoting job growth in the area and increasing the tax base. It does not appear the proposed annexation would adversely affect the existing use nor usability of adjacent or nearby properties either. The properties do not fall within any special overlay districts. However, there are state water buffer requirements that developments of any kind would be required to adhere to. The requested annexation appears that it would conform with the comprehensive plan as it pertains to the future land use map um as proposed by the applicant. Staff is recommending approval of the annexation request, and planning commission also recommended approval of the annexation request.
Okay, thank you. See applicant here?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmembers Julie Sellers here on behalf of the applicant. Um, and I just wanted to make sure that, that this is acceptable. I have a short presentation. I know that we have um, and that you all will call the separate public hearings. Um, I wanted to just go ahead and give a broad overview, and I promise you that I will not take my full ten minutes for all of these different applications, so if I could maybe be a little bit uh long-winded on the annexation, and then probably won't have much to say on any of the others. But again, this is um the property um that is uh, the annexation portion is the property that's currently in Newton County that is designated on um their character area as industrial. So this um is consistent with what the county has designated for this property. Um, it is an industrial um character area for the county. Um, also wanted to talk just a little bit about the um history of this property, which I'm gonna acknowledge you all probably know far more about than I do, but what I can tell you, and I think it's helpful for the members of the public to understand, this is almost a thousand acres that has gone through significant um vetting. The property owners have spent over a hundred thousand dollars in conjunction with the local governments, the county, um to really get this property so that it could be suitable for a large industrial user. Um, so we talk about, you know, zoning and annexation and all of this, but I think it is critical to really understand that for years, this property at both the local and state level has been marketed as the Georgia Historic Heartland mega site. Um, and what we are proposing is certainly a use that would be far less intense than an industrial car manufacturer or something of that nature. Um, again, the applications that we've submitted to the city, the first is the annexation, bringing the property into the city. Then the zoning of that property, we are seeking light industrial zoning as well as that future land use designation for industrial. And then finally, a special use permit for a data center. Talking a little bit about the annexation, um, and this is probably a little bit confusing because it was confusing for me. We have, um, if, if you can see on the chart, number one, that parcel is already in social circle. Then we look at parcel number two. That's the really big property. And this one's a little wonky because you've got part of that that's already in your city and the large part of it that's in the county. So in many ways, annexing this property is really going to clear it, clean it up and make it very clear and kind of round out this area where we've got some, some boundary lines. Um, the other part that I really wanted to highlight, and you'll hear me talk about this a few different times. If you see on the left of the screen, I've got three yellow errors that are pointing to um a tax parcel that S C nine zero zero one two. That is property, it's about fifty-seven acres. It's already in the city of social circle. So we did not include that with our application for zoning or annexing or anything like that. However, we are buying that parcel, so we have been kind of referring that to that parcel as our sort of separation parcels. We know that we've got some residential neighbors close by, so we've got fifty-seven acres that would be providing this So we've got fifty-seven acres that would be providing this significant setback from the thousand acres that would be zoned for the industrial. So I'll touch on that probably a few different times, but because it's not, you know, we're not asking to do anything different with it other than letting you know when we have proposed a condition that would give some assurances of the limitation of the use of that property. And I'm happy to answer, you know, questions about that. What you see on the right is just showing, you know, the annexation outline of those parcels that would be coming into the city with the approval of this application. Again, I think it kind of helps clean up sort of the city borders and really rounds out the property here, and also brings this mega-site under the city's leadership. So this is our original site plan. This was the concept plan that we originally submitted. This is the concept plan that the Planning Commissioners reviewed and did recommend approval for all of our requests. We heard some feedback at the Planning Commission, and so what we did is we took another look at the concept plan and made a few changes. Just to orient everyone, making sure we know which property this is, you've got Highway eleven down towards the bottom. You have Lakewood, or on some maps it's labeled as Stroud's Creek Road, but I knew that that's kind of the where Lakewood goes and then sort of terminates. You've got the transmission power line that really, you know, there's a large area there. And then you've got the railroad, which sort of kind of follows the property line along the bottom of the page. So what we're really talking about is a development in between the power lines and the railroad. This is our updated concept plan, and this was incorporating a lot of feedback that we had received about moving the buildings, you know, kind of farther away from some of the residential areas. Again, I mentioned before that fifty-seven acre property that's already in the city of Social Circle, you see that on the site plan with that yellow star. So that property is remaining agriculture, that property will not have any buildings, it will allow for separation, and then similar to the other triangular piece that is along that Wildwood Drive on the other side of the railroad tracks. So just highlighting some of the differences, I've circled in red. On our original plan, we had buildings that were located between the existing pond and the transmission lines. We have relocated those to pull those farther away from Lakewood. The orangish-yellow kind of triangle, I guess, on the original plan, there were four buildings located there. Again, those are separated significantly. And then you have that additional fifty-seven acres. But so that has been the, you know, density, intensity has really been significantly reduced. Just while we have this site plan, I want to talk about a couple of other things. I do think it's important to consider each property, you know, on its own merits. I did want to just sort of highlight, we're talking about almost a thousand acres. And when you look at the building area, that's only fifty-six acres. So I'm not great with math, and I don't trust my ability to use my calculator to come up with the percentages, but as a fraction of the overall property that would actually contain buildings, which I think is significant. So then going ahead and talking with a little more detail, because it's hard. It's hard to look at these concept plans. I've got glasses and I needed to enlarge it up and, you know, really be able to get down to what we're really talking about. So when you look at the property, and we've proposed some conditions in addition to what the Planning Commissioners recommended, we are proposing over fifteen hundred feet of a setback measured from Lakewood Drive. And when you think fifteen hundred feet, we're talking about more than four football fields, including the end zones. Or if you, you know, think about the Titanic ship, you could line up two ships the size of the Titanic. Significant, this is not visible, you know, it's, you certainly, I couldn't, I doubt anyone here could, I don't know that anybody in the world could throw a football that far. You know, it's a really large separation. And then similar over on the right-hand side, where you see, that's again, kind of our separation parcel. Measuring that setback, again, we've got that significant amount. So we really have tried to be very intentional with pulling the buildings in. You really cannot get a sense of the scale when we just, you know, kind of look at a flat page. It's very hard to tell, but we're talking about almost a thousand acres. And so, you know, four football fields of setbacks is extremely significant. Again, just a little more information, I know that you all are familiar with data centers. You know, again, this was a mega-site certified by the county and the state for industrial development. The data center use is extremely low in traffic generation, certainly not as intensive as a manufacturing plant. And there's a significant financial benefit to the city and the residents from the development. Utilities, that's part of this grad certification through the state certification is confirming the utilities availability. This is not an expense to the community, to the taxpayers, to bring utilities to the site. And then finally, you know, we'll, we are here tonight asking for your approval with the conditions that we circulated. I will touch, is my time up? Okay, I'll go ahead and stop there, and then when we continue going on to the others, I'll touch on a couple of the other things that I think we are offering that are sort of, not sort of, they're unique as far as guarding against some of the concerns we've heard from residents, but I'll save that for one of our other time slots, if that's appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will open the public hearing. We had no one sign up to speak for, but I will open the floor to anybody that's here wishing to speak for this application. Okay? Open the floor for anyone wishing to speak against, and we did have two people to sign up. Tawana Gilbert.
Oh, who's that off there?
Okay, thank you. And Allison.
Bliss.
Who said what?
I think it's you.
Yeah, that's me.
Okay.
Okay, this is what I want to be sure of.
Come to the podium, please.
I'm Allison, Allison Bliss. I live at seventeen nineteen Highway eleven North, Social Circle, Georgia, three zero zero two five. Okay, now, there's a lot of amendments here and special use. I want to make sure, now, are you talking about the nine hundred and ninety-eight acres on the other side of Walton County? Is that what we're talking about?
It's directly behind your house on the other side of railroad tracks, Indian County.
Oh, so it's over the railroad tracks. Okay. You know we built a new house down there as well.
Yep, you probably don't remember me, but I remember you.
A long time ago, elementary school. I do remember you.
Oh, Lord, here we go.
But that's what I want to know, because I've also seen, I noticed in the public sign, you know, the eight, the big field where he's got thirteen plus or minus acreage? See, we're totally opposing that as well, because the acreage in the middle of that is my land, okay, and my aunt's land, Arlena Bryan's. And I know she's been contacted by him, he's wanting to buy her property, but it's not for sale. Okay? So we're slapped down in the middle of that thousand acres or whatever that he's wanting to do. But you're talking about on the other side of the railroad tracks?
What they're saying is, is where y'all live at, all that land on the other side of y'all, they're not going to do anything.
Okay, that field, what about that field that he's got right there?
There's going to be a road across the railroad tracks.
Okay. So he's going over the railroad tracks?
There's no building in that field other than a road.
Do what, sir?
No building in that road, no, no building in that field other than a roadway.
Okay, because I didn't think you could because of the railroad tracks, is that correct?
They got to build a platform, that's what it says here.
Okay. All right. So it's going to be behind my house then, right?
It's a long way from your house.
A long way from my house? All right, what about Arlena Bryan's and her land, well, we own all the front half, and I own the back half. Okay. All right, now. What else I write down? Okay, so that's just going to be a road going to, over the railroad tracks, that thirteen plus or minus. Well, and how far back off the railroad tracks? I know it's got to at least be two hundred feet.
Well, the setback, the setback, I think, for planning is only approved.
So, setback from the track.
So we're getting kind of ahead of ourselves, this is, the conditions aren't until the rezone and the special use, but I believe the planning and zoning recommended, wait one second, minimum of five hundred foot natural vegetative buffer is what the planning and zoning recommended.
Not on this case. What'd she say? Five hundred foot off the railroad tracks, behind my house? I totally oppose that, sir.
Well, it's five hundred foot, not behind your house, it's on the other side.
Oh, I know that, I know you got a two hundred foot railroad track, right? All right, but the initial five hundred foot, right? So it's like seven hundred foot?
I don't know, I can't think of that.
All right, and the only interest that's coming in is buried that thirteen plus or minus acres? Okay.
We're not supposed to be doing call and response, really.
I'm sorry. I'm new to this. I just know somebody trying to do that to my land that we've had since nineteen sixty-eight, and plus, that acreage has been in the family, that's our family land, and it's over two hundred years old. We have a family cemetery there, CSA soldiers buried there, you know? And I've been living there since nineteen sixty-eight, Steve knows, you know?
Your grandmother, your mother, your aunt, all of them.
Right, right, I mean, we're all a close, you know, tight-knit community. Yes, they passed away, but the strong ones in the family, like I and my aunt, you know, we have to fight for what's right, that we feel that we need to do for our family, because this land was left to generations of people, you know? It went from my great-great-granddaddy to my great-great-granddaddy to my great-granddaddy to my granddaddy, and now it's all back on mess now. You know, so that land means a lot to us, the wildlife means a lot to us. I hate driving up Highway eleven and seeing ten, twelve deer on the side of the road that's dead. We feed our deer in the backyard, and we love our wildlife, we love our country life. Like I said, we've been here since nineteen sixty-eight, and I want to continue to stay here. But if something like this is coming to ruin, you know, my generations, there's nothing left for me to give to my children, because we have two homes on that property, on our property, on our five acres. My aunt owns the other fifteen acres, and she has four homes. And like I said, this is all generational blessings that have been given to the generations below, you know, from our ancestors. And believe it or not, my ancestors owned the property from Social Circle all the way to the hub. And this is what we're left with, is this little twenty acres that my aunt and I share, while we have. But, you know, I just like to keep the good old southern, you know, you come into Social Circle, I mean, it's beautiful, you're coming up Highway eleven, beautiful. But then you go see a big old industrial, well, you're going to see a big old road, and I'm sure there's going to be signs out front of that road, you know? It's just not going to look right, and y'all trying to just change a lot. So I'm here speaking, I'm opposing every and all things, and I appreciate your tone. Y'all have a great evening.
Two minutes and twenty-eight seconds. Anyone else wishing to speak against? Seeing and hearing none, I'll close this public hearing. We're not going to take council action until the end of the four public hearings that we have on the agenda tonight. Next up, future land use map, two oh two five zero zero five, Ms. Davis.
Okay, so this request is for an amendment to the city's Social Circle's future land use map to characterize tax parcels S one zero zero, I'm sorry, S one one zero 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 nine, zero one two two zero zero one A, zero one 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 zero zero five, zero one two two zero zero seven A, zero one two two zero zero seven B, and zero one two two zero zero one as industrial character areas. This request is being made in conjunction with the previously mentioned annexation requests for these parcels, along with an application to rezone the properties from agricultural to light industrial as well. With the request to annex the properties into the city, a character area would need to be assigned to the properties if approved. Newton County has identified this character area would need to be, or has identified this character area as an industrial-heavy commercial character area in their most recent comprehensive plan, which was adopted in twenty twenty-three. Under Newton County's comprehensive plan, this character area is defined as being best suited for industrial development and heavy commercial properties, such as large machinery repair, materials processing, and other non-retail uses. Additionally, both Newton County, as well as the Georgia Department of Economic Development, have labeled this property as a Georgia Historic Heartland mega-site, and it has been previously advertised as such by various entities in an attempt to attract a large-scale industrial development, which is Exhibit B in your packet. The proposal appears to be in line with the city's comprehensive plan in terms of being characterized as an industrial character area, as well as Newton County's identifying of the property as an industrial mega-site in both their comprehensive plan and their future land use map. So staff recommends approval of the request to amend the future land use map, and Planning Commission also recommended approval of the request at their October twenty-eighth meeting.
Were they all in favor of that?
Oh, I don't remember off the top of my head, I can, I...
For that part, they were.
Thank you. I think, I think the, I think there was a non-unanimous vote on the annexation, and then this one was unanimous. I apologize, that was my first meeting back.
Okay, thank you, Ashley, that's, you're actually the applicant, I believe, so you have ten minutes? Who is the applicant on this?
No, the applicant is still the same applicant, yeah.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, Julie Sellers here on behalf of the applicant. We would respectfully request the future land use designation for the properties for the annexation be the industrial, and believe that that is consistent with what the county currently has the property designated as, and would be consistent with the area and the intended use of the property that has historically been a heavy industrial designation by the state and the county, and we are asking for the light industrial. And I'll reserve the rest of my time for rebuttal, and happy to answer questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. All right, with that, I will open the public hearing. Floor is open for anyone wishing to speak in favor. Had no one sign in, but I'll give anyone... Had no one sign in, but I'll give anyone the opportunity that wishes to speak to do so. Okay. Open the floor for anyone wishing to speak against. And we do have two people signed in for this one, uh, Tawana Gilbert. Okay. And Allison.
I oppose.
Okay. Alright, um. Applicant? Yeah, any, anyone else wishing to speak against?
No, sir.
Okay. So you have time, I mean, you, you have no comment? Okay, thank you. Alright, close this public hearing, which takes us to rezon two oh two five dash zero one five, Ms. Davis.
So, um, this is a request to rezon tax parcels S one one zero 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 nine, zero one two two zero zero one A, zero one 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 zero zero five, zero one two two zero zero seven A, zero one two two zero zero seven B, and zero one two two zero zero one, from agricultural to light industrial as a part of a proposed, um, uh, data center development. Uh, this request, as previously stated, is being made for the purpose of seeking special use approval to allow for data center under light industrial, uh, zoning. As I mentioned earlier, Newton County has identified this area as being, as one being best suited for industrial development and heavy commercial, uh, pr- uh, uses, such as large machinery repair, materials pro- processing, and other non-retail uses. Uh, this site was previously in consideration for the local, location of a large-scale automotive manufacturing plant for Jaguar. Um, a light industrial zoning designation is one that would be both compatible with the industrial character area and would also be the least intensive zoning, uh, designation that, uh, would potentially allow for a data center campus. Developments under light industrial zoning would be required to adhere to all developmental standards outlined in Section three point four, as well as Article seven of the UDC. Standards outlined in these regulations include maximum impervious surface ratio of forty percent, uh, two hundred nat- two hundred foot natural buffer on all sides, uh, but residential uses and zonings, uh, state water buffer requirements, and others. Um, so, in looking at the updated site plan, let's see. I know I have a comparing, okay. So if you look, I, I have a slide with both of these on there, so we can really kind of look at both site plans. Um, but on, uh, the right side, you have the amended site plan, um, which shows the relocation of those buildings that the applicant had mentioned previously. Um, the total building area proposed is just under two point five million square feet, which is only five point seven eight percent of this property. So we're, we're, we've been talking about the scale and how it kind of looks on a flat piece of paper. Um, so this would be, uh, not even a drop in the bucket of their forty percent impervious surface ratio when it comes to this, almost a thousand. Five point, uh, seven eight percent. Um, the updated site plan shows entrances off of Highway eleven and Wildwood only. Um, so, uh, those other entrances that are shown on the previous site plan on the north side of the site, um, are no longer needed because those three buildings got moved. Um, it is not clear, however, which roads would be for primary, um, and/or construction entrances, and which would be for emergency use only. So a community meeting was held virtually on October fifteenth, however, aside from their applicant and their engineers, there were no other attendees. The range of uses of the proposed zoning district is in line with Newton County's comprehensive plan and their future land use map as well, as a proposed character area for social circles for, for our future land use map. Uh, there appears to be adequate school, public safety, emergency facilities available to support the proposed rezon request. However, while there does not appear to be any, uh, stormwater or drainage issues on this prop- on these properties at this time, um, we will review that during the planned review phase and prior to, uh, the beginning of any development. Um, I would also like to note that Newton County Water and Sewer Authority are the service providers for this area per our SDS with Newton County, or our service delivery strategy. Um, ooh, going the wrong way, sorry. Um, so, staff, um, did recommend approval of the request to rezon, um, with the condition that primary access onto the property to include construction a- access must be along Highway eleven and all other access points, um, shall be for emergency use only. Um, and then Planning Commission, uh, also recommended approval, and they had several more conditions, so I'm gonna read those for you now. Um, number one, Stroud's Creek Road access shall be for emergency use only and constructed to the standards outlined in the city's UDC. Um, that condition could potentially be removed, uh, because the updated plans don't show that entrance anymore. Um, number two, construction and primary access shall be from Highway eleven only. Uh, number three, Wildwood, once relocated, shall be brought up to the minimum standards of a local road as outlined in the UDC. Number four, uh, minimum of five hundred foot natural vegetative buffer extending from along the old Stroud's Creek Road, uh, property lines to the railroad. Number five, uh, closed-loop system shall be used and evaporation cooling methods are prohibited. Number six, maximum of thirty-five parking spaces per building. Number seven, no building or structure shall be placed between the power transmission line and old Stroud's Creek Road. And number eight, no building or structure shall be located between Highway eleven and the railroad. Um, and then, the applicant provided staff with some responses to those conditions, um, for the rezon. They didn't have any responses to conditions one through three. They asked to delete four and five and include that under a more, um, comprehensive condition four, which reads, "The building setback shall be measured pursuant to the Unified Development Code unless specifically defined below." So, um, those definitions will be, no building or structure shall be located between Highway eleven and the railroad. No building or structure shall be located between the power transmission line and old Stroud's Creek Road. Uh, the building setback shall be a minimum of fifteen hundred feet as measured from the frontage of parcel SC zero four zero zero four along Lakewood Drive. Uh, as measured from the northeast property line of parcel SC zero nine zero zero one two, a minimum of fifteen hundred feet and no data center building shall be constructed on parcel SC zero nine zero zero one two. The use of parcel SC zero nine zero zero one two shall be for separation of the buildings from nearby properties and relocation of the South Wildwood Drive. Uh, number five, they're proposing, uh, if a land disturbance permit is not filed with the city within twelve months after this zoning, this zoning decision is final and resolution of any legal challenges, and upon written notice from the property owners, the city will initiate the process to change the zoning from the, of the property from light industrial back to agricultural. And they wanted to revise number six, um, about the parking spaces to be one parking space for five thousand, uh, square foot, and then seven and eight were grouped under that number four. So, um, just to talk about the parking spaces, uh, doing those calculations, um, the calculations for one parking space per five thousand square feet is four hundred and ninety-three parking spaces, and the thirty-five per building is, uh, four hundred and twenty, so we're looking at the difference of seventy-three parking spaces. And, um, the conditions that were approved a few weeks ago, um, if, for consistency's sake, if we did want to add them, um, we previously approved all buildings be one-story, um, sound dampeners on all equipment, low and high frequencies, um, and any wells affected by the project shall be paid for by the end user.
Talking about the fifteen hundred feet from Lakewood, Lakewood. Um, seeing how they moved those buildings from Lakewood to across the lake, or they, would they be willing to say they wouldn't do it anytime between the lake and Lakewood?
That would be a question for the applicant, which I believe in their presentation for this case, the rezon, they'll be going over, uh, the why behind their conditions. Um, but I'll be happy to answer any questions that I can. Uh, I also wanted to, uh, mention too, in previous approvals, um, where we talked, where we conditioned based off of cooling systems, um, we approved a condition for hybrid cooling systems shall be permitted, so as to allow for both open and closed-loop cooling systems. That was what, that was done, um, not this past time, but I think the time before that. Um, and the thirty-five parking spaces per building is consistent with previous cases that we've approved as well, so.
Anything else for Ms. Davis? Thank you. Okay, um, open the floor to the applicant.
In this packet, you have the original site plan and then the updated site plan, because I know sometimes it's just, to me, it's hard to see on the screen, so that, um, shows you both of those plans as well as the conditions that we have, uh, requested. Um, the top page is what I'm gonna call a clean version, um, of the conditions that we are asking, uh, for the council to approve. The second page is a marked-up version of showing what the Planning Commission, um, recommended, and then we struck through or moved and kind of, uh, put, put notes on that, so, so that's what we have there. Um, I guess I'll start with, um, just walking through, um, and, and thank you to, to Ashley for going through the conditions. I wanted to talk about, um, sort of the why behind some of the conditions. When we're looking at zoning, um, and, and Ashley and I have, have talked about this, and I think about this a lot when I'm working with cities, you know, we are all here tonight and we can be on the same page as far as the intent. And I think a good example of that would be the Planning Commission, and I did go back in my notes, I think we actually had unanimous approval, five to O on all of these. Um, but in the, in that Planning Commission meeting, um, there was talk about, um, the, 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 the buffering and the intent was just sort of on, on this one area. But it's really hard to, to make that translate into the conditions. So what we have done with condition number four is we tried to really get specific, and that's why this is maybe a little bit lengthier, um, than, than some others with the reference to the, where we're starting the measurement from. But we thought that it was important to give some specificity, cuz what we don't wanna do is have conditions that if all of us win the lottery and retire to Florida, um, or move to the mountains, that somebody's left scratching their head trying to figure out, well, what did they really mean here? So, um, what we have done, as, as Ashley said, and her math skills are far superior to mine, um, this development before you is, you know, five percent of, you know, building coverage on a thousand acres, that is not much at all. You know, when, when you really think about the magnitude of this property, and I think that the, um, goal here has been, you know, these are one-story buildings, so for example, the application that you heard earlier tonight, those were two-story buildings. So when we think about visual impact, these are, these are not towering skyscrapers. It's a one-story building setback significantly, um, from all of the, um, property lines. Um, one of the conditions, I think, um, would address, um, the residents, you know, kind of some questions about, um, what, what this would mean, kind of in close proximity to her. I think it's certainly far less intensive versus the other industrial uses that were anticipated for the, the mega site. Um, and we do have the condition in here that no building or structure would be, um, located between Highway eleven and the railroad. So we would have the access road on the one parcel, and, and that's really it. Then we go over and we've got po- a portion of that fifty-seven, what I'm calling the separation parcel, um, as you go over towards Wildwood. Um, but we believe that, um, the calculations here and the, excuse me, the measurements here, and given the specificity, this really helps pull the buildings away, they're, you know, so that they're not visible and really, um, prevents them from encroaching, um, on others. A couple of other things that I wanted to men- mention is the time, um, restriction. This, I think, is unique, I don't know that, um, in my review of some other matters that have come before you, I don't think that this is a condition that has been offered, um, up by the applicant. But what we have heard from some in the community is we're a little bit worried, we've got, you know, what feels like a, a handful of data center applications that have been approved, and what if they don't get built right away? And so what we are proposing is, um, condition five, so that if a land disturbance permit is not submitted to the city, showing that development is moving forward within twelve months, cuz it takes a while for the engineers to do their business and then the city to be able to review the plans, um, after this decision is final, so hopefully that is tonight. If someone raises a legal challenge and it gets drawn out, it would be after that's resolved. Um, but the, the property owners could give notice to the city to say, you know what? We were okay with our property getting zoned for light industrial, because we thought we were gonna sell it for this data center, but if that hasn't moved along at a pretty good clip, then the city will go ahead and initiate the zoning, which you all have the power to do, to change that zoning from the light industrial back to the agriculture. So that is what we, um, are offering here, which I think, um, I won't get too legal with you, but Tony, um, Mr. Powell certainly knows what I'm talking about. Sometimes back in the day, there were clauses that had like reversion, you know, like if something doesn't happen, then it automatically goes back. I don't think that that's good practice, because this, you all are making legislative decisions. So I think there needs to be a mechanism, but what this, um, condition does is it gives you the assurance of knowing, you're not gonna have somebody saying, wait a second, you know, don't do that. It, it's, it's written in here and everybody's okay taking the property back to, um, the ag. Again, on the parking spaces, our request is one parking space per five thousand. I think it gives us a little more parking, not significant. Um, usually when we see, um, limitations, trying to limit the amount of parking, it's because in theory, that would reduce the building, you know, and the impervious. When we're talking about almost a thousand acres and we're developing less than five percent, I don't know that, you know, eighty additional parking spaces has any impact on, um, the significant green space that we are maintaining on this site, um, that, that will, um, certainly be of benefit. Um, I think that is all I had, um, on the, um, zoning other than, uh, yeah, that's all I had on the zoning, and then we can, I'll, I'll touch on, um, when we get to the use permit. Um, again, happy to answer any questions and save the rest of my time for rebuttal.
On the, on your fifteen hundred foot setback you were talking about, making it standardized, is that off the railroad tracks on the front piece?
N- no, sir.
I know what's on the back part, but-
Seven hundred and sixty-six on the railroad.
Yeah, um. Where? Um, I'll try to get to show you. So thi- these are the two areas that we were talking about, the fifteen hundred feet. Um, so it would be, you know, the, the Lakewood Drive, again, back towards Lakewood. We have the other condition for, eh, B.
Seven seventeen.
One thirteen hundred something square feet and over there close, hers, where she lives at is from the railroad, it's right away, it looks like thirteen hundred? And seven hundred and fifty on down that close to the curb, it's stolen.
That, that's correct. You've got really good eyesight.
So it's seventeen?
It's thirteen hundred something on the railroad track. Off, off that right way.
And, and what, you know, what we would, um, here, you know, we have the revised plan, um, we were comfortable committing to, you know, the, the two fifteen hundred that we have, um, listed. I think we would be concerned about getting, eh, eh, it would not work to be able to say fifteen hundred all the way around, um, because we do have streams that we're not encroaching and, and all of that. So, um, we, I think that that would have a pretty significant adverse implication. But as far as, um, from the property, um, that I believe, you know, um, that we were talking about where the, the family has had the property for quite some time, um, the parcel next to them, um, on, I'm gonna say- um, on, I'm gonna say, you know, on the Highway eleven side of the railroad track, that will not have any buildings on that. And then you also have that additional separation with the parcel that's already in social circles. So, um, I think when we look at this, you know, certainly far less impact than, um, I think what was originally envisioned for this property.
Let me ask you this, on the side where the buildings are, I'm pretty sure you, where, where there's not gonna be any buildings, I'm pretty sure you're not gonna take down any of the trees, but on the side where the buildings are at it, are y'all planning on clearcutting that all the way to the property line?
I'm gonna, I'd.
Hello, Brad Kaber with the, with the applicant. Um, I am the applicant, rather, sorry. Um, yeah, so to answer your question, where, you said where the, like, pod and, oh, it's not up on the screen more, but.
Buildings in the pond, in, in the railroad track.
Yeah, here, in this area?
Yeah.
No, I, I mean, if not, if not otherwise necessary, just to grade the building pads, we would have no intention to, to clear an, anything really outside of the building, the building pad areas, and just the necessary grading for, for slopes.
Well, that creek runs all the way through the property. I don't see how you're not gonna encroach on it.
Well, there's several, there's several creeks and, and streams. Um, obviously, all the civil engineering would have to contemplate that, and we're, we're, there's plenty of room to stay out of the streams. We stood here before, planning and zoning, and said, we have, we have no intention of impacting streams. We have, we have ample space to, to commit to that to you as well.
I think one additional, um, note I wanna make, you know, again, just kinda highlighting how it is so hard to just look at a eleven-by-seventeen piece of paper and, and really get a sense for it. Um, on all of the, the blue lines that you see on the site plan, you know, that would, would be representative of streams, there's a green line that also shows that seventy-five-foot stream buffer, and when you're looking at this, you know, it, it's just a, it, it's just so, it's so small when we're looking at the totality of, um, a thousand acres.
And the actual, you know, like I said, the streams have to be delineated by an actual environmentalist that has to go to the Army Corps of Engineers for jurisdictional determination. So this is subject to change somewhat, so we'll have to be flexible on, you know, slightly moving things around to accommodate the natural features that, that will, that exist now, and the engineering will reflect that. So when we're answering the questions about, you know, say, the buffer on the rail side, we, we're just trying to protect the ability to, you know, slightly move things as, as the engineering deems necessary.
The reason I asked about the trees were, I just feel like that, I know you gotta do what you gotta do to build the buildings if we're approved yet, but I, I just feel like the more trees that are left, the less it's gonna affect the few houses that are still there.
Of course, yeah, and there's no, again, we would, we would not clear any trees if we didn't, we didn't need to at all, and at only less than six percent, you know, density of the site, even with the impervious area, if you just doubled the building floor area, twelve percent versus, you know, the code allowed forty percent, um, there'll be significant, you know, wood still on the site. And I would estimate the closest building to, um, the lady's house is half a mile, based on what we're looking at here.
Because whether the thirteen was that is actually a good ways, if you look on down, I mean, if you were to measure the angle, it's, it's a, it's a long, it's a tree.
It is.
So.
So half a mile?
It's about, I, I would guess it's about half a mile.
So I'm coming down Highway eleven, and I look to the left, I'm gonna see trees, or I'm gonna see this.
It's gonna be just like what you saw.
Yeah, you, that's right.
I don't know, I ride my horse down that road, Hollis Road, all the time, and it's very peaceful.
Yeah, the closest building we showed to Hollis Road, looks like it's about eight hundred, eight hundred feet away from that road. And again, the buildings are, you know, what the county plans on doing with this land, should it stay in the county, is have four million square feet of industrial with trucks and rail use and other things. Um, we do feel this is the, the quietest use possible for the site.
And I think Brad just actually touched on something, I think, there, if this was a user that was more, um, manufacturing-focused, you know, really activating that rail line there would certainly, even just from a noise perspective, be much more significant than, um, what we are proposing with this use.
So what you're saying is you, we don't want another reading on that type of thing?
That is not what we're bringing to you.
All right, where are we at? That was questions on the applicant. Yeah, all right. With that, we'll open the public hearing. Um, open the floor for any, anyone wishing to speak in favor. We didn't have anyone to sign in or to sign up for that, but I'll open the floor for anyone wishing to speak in favor. Okay. Uh, open the floor for anyone wishing to speak against, and we did have a couple of people sign up for that. Uh, Tawana Gilbert, she left. Allison. Want to come to the podium? You got her address earlier.
Yes, I oppose any at all, because it has to do with, um, interfering with my ancestors' property, who has, um, see, I'm not gonna be able to have all that stuff behind my house. And, you know, eventually, we'll have to sell, because it is disrupting, you know, the, the land, the wildlife, our sanctity. We are already getting all these here. Well, anyway, they're getting shoved down our throats, and we're getting tired of it. We like our good country land. We like our quiet. It's very nice, very peaceful. And now, I mean, we got residential all around us, and then you wanna put the, um, what do you call them, those things? Yeah, them, all over the place. I mean, come on, let's leave something original. Let's not mess with what God done. Why do we gotta get everything stirred up and everybody stirred up? I know, you know, growth is inevitable, but if I can keep growth from coming and taking and interfering with my peace of mind and my family's peace of mind, I'm gonna fight for it, you know? I mean, I understand the position that y'all are all in. You know, you don't live in my, walk in my shoes. You don't know what that property means to me and my aunt. I mean, it's gonna be disrupted. Yeah, they might just have one little road, but behind me, there's gonna be, all that going on. And there's only a, what, seventeen hundred-foot buffer that you're gonna keep the trees on? Me and my dog, we go out, we go down to that creek all the time, you know? We play in that creek. My kids play in that creek. My grandkids play in the creek. You know, I'm sorry we're trespassing, but, you know, we like, we've been here since nineteen sixty-eight, but, um, you know, that's just gonna, just put all that, I know it's gonna be behind us, but we're still gonna be able to see it. I mean, my husband and I, we get out, you know, my, we get home from work, go out on the front porch, back porch, wherever the sun is shining, have our coffee, listen to the birds, hear the crickets, the frogs, the squirrels chirping, the birds chirping. I just think that it's a mistake, and, you know, it's not just my family, it's other families on this, um, land as well. So, I oppose, sorry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant, do you have any comment?
Um, just, you know, briefly, um, eh, Ms., is it Bliss?
Bliss.
Bliss, I'm sorry. Um, I didn't wanna call you Miss Allison, but I got your first name. Um, you certainly respect and understand, you know, we are here advocating for, for change, but I do think that the change that you all are considering, um, is a benefit, because first and foremost, it gives this city council the ability to control what happens on this property. So right now, what we know is that the unincorporated portion in Newton County is zoned, and, excuse me, is designated, um, and is marketed to industrial users. Um, so I think that, you know, by approving this, it provides some certainty. It provides, um, a use that is not as disruptive by any stretch of the imagination as some type of manufacturing use could be, something that would really activate and utilize the rail. So if you have the spur that would be developed to really activate that, um, for Ms. Bliss and, and her family, I think that is a significantly more, um, impactful use. And, and so while I can appreciate changing, um, a thousand acres from sort of the undeveloped state that it is in now to developing around five percent of it, it is a change, but in the big scheme of things, and certainly compared to what it could be left in the county, um, I think that this is absolutely a win for the Bliss family to have you all approve this, um, because of the very limited nature and the fact that it gives, um, certainty rather than, uh, leaving it, um, up for the county, um, to decide and for another more intensive user to come in.
Can I ask one question? Now, how many buildings are they having, are they going to put on this property?
You got to ask yours, you don't have that.
But there's gonna be a substation.
All right. All right. We'll close this, uh, public hearing, and it takes us to the next item, uh, special use, two oh two five zero zero nine. Ms. Davis, staff report.
So for the use of a data center, you do have to have a special use in light industrial. Um, they're only permitted outright in heavy industrial, uh, so this is the least intensive way to get, um, a spe- a, a data center. Um, so, uh, I've shown on the, uh, the previous and the, the updated site plan, um, this development will be constructed across six different parcels totaling approximately nine down, nine hun- nine hundred and eighty acres, and would consist of twelve separate single-story buildings and electrical substation, and two additional buildings, um, on the north, uh, side of the property for support operations. Um, the proposed use is compatible with the current character area of the properties as designated by Newton County, as well as its designation of a mega-site as listed by Newton County and other state agencies. Uh, given the residential uses and zonings of the adjacent property, the proposed development would be required at minimum to have a two-hundred-foot natural buffer on all sides as outlined in section three point four of the UDC. Uh, the proposed development concept appears to fall within the parameters, uh, outlined in section three point four point six point A of the UDC, which regulates and defines data centers. There appear to be adequate, uh, school, public safety, emergency facilities available uh, for the proposed annexation and zoning requests. However, um, they will have to go through any stormwater, uh, review along with, uh, EPD, like, like the state would get involved in regards to the state waters. Um, Army Corps of Engineer also gets involved, uh, because these, uh, waters cross multiple, multiple sites. Um, so, uh, there are no, just, just some other things I haven't mentioned quite yet before. Um, no natural gas services available in the area. Gas services could be run down to the development at the expense of the developer. Um, and as mentioned before, this falls under Newton County Water and Sewer Authority Service Area, uh, and the applicant has provided a letter from the, uh, from Newton County Water and Sewer Authorities, that there is a twenty-four-inch water line in the area located along an easement parallel with the railroad. Uh, so there's no sewer lines currently adjacent to the property. They also indicated that confirmation of services was not a commitment of water or sewer capacity, uh, that any large development on these properties would need to utilize a closed-loop water cooling system or reuse. Um, so staff recommends approval of the request for, uh, special use, we went over that already, um, with the condition that primary access onto the property, uh, to include construction access must be along Highway eleven and all other access points, um, shall be for emergency uses only. Uh, planning commission recommended approval with the following conditions, uh, the primary access onto the property to include construction access must be along Highway eleven and all other access points shall be for emergency use only, and construction must begin within twelve months, uh, from the date of the approval. Um, the applicant had some responses to those question, or to those, uh, conditions. Uh, they were fine with the first condition. Uh, they would ask that we would replace the proposed condition two with, um, similar language to what we talked about in the rezone. If a land disturbance permit is not filed with the city within twelve months after this zoning, zoning decision is final and resolution of any legal challenges, this special use permit will expire, and a new application approval will be required to use the property for a data center.
Any questions for me on this one?
Thank you, Ashley.
Mm-hmm.
All right, I'll call on the applicant, please.
Good evening. Uh, Julie Sellers here on behalf of the applicant. Um, as Ashley mentioned, you know, the planning commission, um, approved all of these requests, and the, the condition that was related to the special use permit, the wording of it, I, I think we're fine with the intent. The intent was, let's move along or, you know, start from scratch. Um, but the wording of it was just the construction must begin within twelve months. If something happens and this, you know, if, if the council approves this, and if there is any kind of legal challenge, um, and then also just the time it takes for the engineers to finalize the plans, um, our request is to substitute that to say that we would, um, be required to submit that land disturbance permit within that twelve-month period, um, with the special use permit, you know, I, I think the terminology would be that, that the use permit would just simply expire if that doesn't happen, and, um, someone could come back but would have to go through the same process to, to seek approval. Um, so that's the uh, change that we would, um, propose for the two conditions on the special use permit, and happy to answer any questions that you may have, um, for us. Again, we do, um, you know, really believe that there are, um, a lot of benefits uh, to the city and to the residents with the, um, additional investment that would come from the data center use, as well as the, you know, lack of impact on roads, schools, and all of that. So, um, we ask for your support and approval.
Thank you. All right, with that, I will open the public hearing. Open the floor for anyone wishing to speak in favor. No one signed up for that. Floor is open for anyone that wishes to speak in favor. Seeing none, open the floor for anyone wishing to speak against, and we do have three people that signed up for that, but I think Wendell Pitts, are you still here? Okay. I think all, all three of these, uh, people have gone. Anyone wishing to speak against?
Allison Bliss is still there.
Oh, is she?
Oh, you know I oppose.
Allison, you want to get up here and say it officially?
Do I just say I oppose?
That's.
That's it.
Yes.
All right.
Good enough.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Yeah. Anyone else wishing to speak against? All right. The applicant, do you have anything else to add?
No, sir, again, we are happy to answer questions, um, just, you know, would ask for the, um, approval of all of the applications with the conditions, um, that, you know, I'm gonna call it the, the clean version, um, that really, I think, allows for the specificity, um, for this development. Um, again, having the city control the growth, um, in close proximity to its residents, I think is a significant benefit to, uh, the city and the residents rather than, um, leaving the property in the county up for the county's decision. So, um, we appreciate your c- time and consideration and certainly the engagement that we've had throughout the process.
Okay, thank you. Uh, with that, I will close the public hearing. I'm gonna ask the council to vote, uh, on this. First thing is consideration of annexation two oh two five zero zero six.
I make a motion to approve the annexation of the tax parcels listed.
Okay, a motion from Nathan. Second. Motion from Nathan and a second from Tyson, any further discussion?
So, looking at discussion, I'm sorry. So, looking at the, um, the map, we're, we're annexing on the other side of the railroad track.
Yeah.
Where a small portion is already in the city limits. There's two portions already in the city.
It's a small portion that's on the other side, but they're not going to develop.
They're saying both of those, they're already in the city limits.
There's a portion, so, hold on, I'm trying to get back there. So you can, it's really, it's really obvious when you bring in the future land use map right there. So, that green triangle basically is in the city limits already.
So there was two reds over here, that triangle, and then that other little spot is not in the city limits.
Yep. Correct, not currently.
So we went around those houses.
But that's a peninsula, it's not an island.
It used to go when, when they, they didn't annex the rest of their property, when Ms. Vineyard came in. It used to be the, the, the city used to have like a V right there, and then the circle. And when Ms. Vineyard annexed her property, and part of that property was still left in Newton County.
I just see we went around those houses.
Well, yeah, did I made the, the, some of the, those are parts, I think a parcel that's on the other side of the railroad, so.
Correct, the, the parcel goes across the railroad.
Any other discussion? All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Uh, motion passes with one in opposition. All right, next we have the consideration of the future land use map, uh, zero zero five.
Like a motion to adopt the recommendation of the planning, of the Planning Commission.
Okay, motion from Steve, is there a second?
Second.
Uh, second from Teresa, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate saying aye.
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 Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay.
What I wanted is in the city.
All right. All right, so we have a, uh, a tie vote. A vote with, um, Stephen Tracy. All right, next up, consideration of a rezone, zero one five.
And I can go over the conditions again if I need to, I know it's been a minute.
Whoop, whoop.
Um, so, uh, Planning Commission, these are their recommended conditions, um, that, number one, uh, that it get approved with, number one, Strouts Creek Road access shall be for emergency use only and constructed to the standards outlined in the city's G D C. Um, again, with the updated site plan, that, that condition is kind of a moot point. Number two, construction and primary access shall be from Highway eleven only. Number three, Wildwood Drive, once relocated, shall be brought up to the minimum standards for a local road as outlined by the U D C. Number four, there should be a minimum fi- five-hundred-foot natural vegetative buffer extending from allow, along the old Strouts Creek Road property lines to the railroad. Number five, closed-loop cooling systems shall be used and evaporation cooling si- cooling methods are prohibited. Number six, maximum of thirty-five parking spaces per building. Number seven, no building or structure shall be placed between the power slash transmission line and old Strouts Creek Road. And, number eight, no building or structure shall be located between Highway eleven and the railroad. And then you guys have the proposed conditions by the applicant for the rezone.
So basically, the conditions that they've done, all they done is swap and put some setbacks at greater than what we had anyway.
Correct, and, and to be fair, um, the applicant's proposed conditions, when it comes to the setbacks, do make it easier for future staff to regulate that as well. Um, it makes it a little more clear and concise.
Same thing on the, on the applicant's recommendations for the reversionary clauses. They, they're superior. They, it's, it's, uh, really a waiver constitutional, gets the applicant to go along, and that language is better.
And that, that is not in the Planning Commission's recommendation, so they added that, um, in, into that, uh, to their conditions. Um, the main thing is that they did delete, um, number five, the closed-loop cooling system. And just to point out again, in previous cases, we did, um, have the condition that hybrid cooling system shall be permitted so as to allow for both open and closed-loop cooling systems. That's, that's what we've done in previous cases. And then the number six was revised to a, a ratio instead of a set number of spaces per building. But again, difference of eighty, less than eighty parking spaces. And a couple weeks ago, we did add the conditions of the one-story buildings, the sound dampeners, and the any wells affected by, um, and earlier tonight, we did add some of those conditions as well. So, if you want to remain consistent, you can add those too.
So we had the conditions, right?
Yes.
Yep.
I'll make a motion.
Would the, would the conditions go with this action or would it go with the next action?
So, that's completely up to you guys, um, you, it, it, it runs with the land, so, um, even if the special use permit expired, these conditions would still apply to the rezone. Um, if for whatever reason, the city decided to keep it light industrial and just let the special use permit expire, so if another data center wanted to come through. Um, so, it's, it's really kind of dealer's choice, um, but, I, I mean, I don't see any harm with keeping it with the rezone versus the special use. And, and any change in conditions would have to come back before council too, just, just to remind y'all of that as well.
Tyson, do you, motion still stands?
You didn't make a motion, did you?
I thought you did.
He didn't make a motion.
It was a motion to, and then we, we got into more discussion.
I make a motion to take the applicant's conditions and add the ones that we put on that other night, the ones about the noise dampeners, the, you know, hidden cost for utilities to, cost of difficulty in any way, and any wells in the area that it affects, that'll be at the, the level through expense to replace.
That's a new story.
Huh?
That's a new story.
And all the buildings be single-story.
Second. All right, we have a motion from Steve and a second from Tyson, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed?
Nay.
Teresa? Okay. Once again, we have a tie. I'll vote with Stephen Teresa. All right, next up, we have consideration of special use.
We've got one more action. Oh, oh yeah, sorry, sorry.
Is that right?
Yeah, you're right.
We're, we're all tired.
Uh, special use zero zero nine.
And just a reminder on those conditions, um, staff recommended primary access only to be on Highway eleven. Everything else would be emergency use only, um, and Planning Commission recommended the same thing along with the construction must begin within twelve months, um, from the date of approval. And then you guys have the applicant's proposed conditions, which again, they were fine with condition number one. Um, and then the second condition just changed that language and made it, um, a little bit, uh, better for the applicant, but still pretty strict in terms of expiration on a project like this.
I'll make the same motion with same stipulations as the previous.
You want exact same conditions?
So good with the special use and, uh, rezone.
I just want to clarify, okay.
Got a, a motion from Steve?
Second.
All right, got a motion from Steve and a second from Tyson, any further discussion? All those in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, once again, that's a tie, I'll vote with the ayes. We have a, um, another public hearing, do we want to go ahead and do that?
I don't, you, you need to take a quick break.
Okay. All right. We're, we're going to pause for five minutes. See you, see you maybe next week or so. Is that supper, Nathan?
Yeah, I have. Quick.
Start to quit before you can. Do that later.
More appetizer, now this is dinner, I guess, yeah.
They just want to move on by the camp.
Oh, yeah.
I got my bronzer, my niggas, this ain't helping.
I've got. Let's start bringing heat pad. I'm telling you, I just like persisting cold. And so, they're putting me on like steroid and antibiotic and stuff this part today. And so, they've also put me on this cold syrup to help me sleep, so, I'll probably knock out three parts after this.
Yes, take care.
Yes, take care.
Come on, Steve.
All right, Steve. I'm about to get a heat pad, huh?
You and me both. I miss Dancing with the Stars.
Well, I got a bad knee, so cold it get there. The more it feel like it's sticking.
It's Prince Night. There's two dances each.
Now here it go.
Thank you, everyone.
You're welcome.
Uh, just a text amendment.
Text amendment to change the, the community meeting.
Two. Yeah. I say go. That's no, I'm a white on Steve. Yeah, he's, he's the original.
I think there's a wait.
Oh, yeah, that one light is not working. He, he said he, he said it must be the sensor because the lights. Yeah, it's just not popping off.
Oh, yeah, I can't tell you how many times I've gotten in there and that.
I sort of take my phone every time.
All right, Ashley, go ahead.
So, um, we, uh, we've been discussing amendment, amending requirements for community meetings and mail notices. So, based off of recent zoning applications that have required, uh, community meetings, we've seen an uptick in number of people only doing virtual meetings. Right now, the UDC doesn't explicitly state which one you have to do, whether virtual or in person. So, due to the potential impact of the approval of certain zoning requests, staff believes that a requirement should be made that community meetings must be held in person and the option of virtual attendance only be offered as additional means for those that cannot attend the meeting in person. Also, the UDC states that mail notices are only required to be sent to property owners within the city limits. So, we don't have to mail outside the city limits to any adjacent property owners that might be in the county. With the potential impact that the zone, approval of certain, certain zoning applications could have on surrounding properties, staff believes that all mail notices should be sent to all adjacent properties, both inside and outside the incorporated city limits. Staff recommends amending this section of the UDC to include the requirement that community meetings be held in person along with the requirement that mail, mailed notices must be sent to all property owners both inside and outside the city limits whose property boundaries lie adjacent to the boundaries of the subject property by the most direct distance. Planning Commission recommended approval of the same with the change that both a virtual option and an in-person option be offered for community meetings. So, they, while they don't necessarily have to be held at the same time, both options should be available for the people that can't make it in person.
Any questions? All right, with that, I'll open the public hearing. Open floor for anyone wishing to speak in favor. Yeah, go ahead, Steve. All right, anyone wishing to speak against? I think we had one person to sign, sign for that, but he's already gone.
Yeah, I will say, he did talk to me when he was signing the sheet. He said he's against a virtual option totally. That was his comment to me outside when he was signing the sheet.
You might want to name his, name for the record since you had his comment.
Is Wendell Pitts.
Wendell Pitts, who lives at five seventy-seven Wildwood Drive, Social Circle. All right, um, close the public hearing and now we will take council action on this one.
I make a motion to approve the planning and zoning's recommendation of having a community meeting and virtual meeting.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion from Nathan and a second from Steve. Any further discussion?
Just want to make sure we're saying that, so, the, the applicant has to be here for a, for in-person, and then they have the option to do a second one.
No, they have to do both.
So, so, so with this motion.
They can virtualize the one that they're here.
Yeah.
So, with this motion, they can have, they would, they would have to have a in-person and a virtual meeting. For sake of convenience, if I was an applicant, I would do them both at the same time and virtualize the in-person meeting. But, if we want to get more specific, we can require at the same time, or we can say, at your leisure, you have to do both.
We're making sure that the applicant comes here and do a meeting.
Yes, does meeting here, yeah.
They got skin in the game and not somewhere else having meet. I just wanted, I just want to make sure they got skin in the game, they come in here.
If it does that, then it also makes sure that, um,
People working or?
Well, it's not, it's not just that, but also the, the letters, you know, previously we were sending people who were in the city limits, you know, they should head down Cannon Drive, they didn't get notified. This fixes that, you know, for all property owners who are in the city or not.
All right, we're good, David.
Okay. Do we vote?
Not yet.
Okay. Do we have a second? You seconded, right?
Yes, Steve. We're just ready for the vote.
All right, so, uh, further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Ashley, you're done.
All right, that brings us to Mr. Taylor, consent agenda.
So, we have five items on the consent agenda this evening. Uh, we have approval of the minutes of the mayor and council regular meeting from October twenty-first. We have the minutes of the mayor and council, uh, call meeting that was set on November sixth. We also have the minutes of the mayor and council work session that was also held on November the sixth. We have approval of resolution for, um, to recertify, um, the city as a, uh, uh, GMA certified city of ethics. And we have a modification of an action taken on January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five to transfer four point six acres of land to Social Circle Board of Education. Be clear on what this is, is that, uh, we all agreed, um, to, you know, exchange four point six acres in exchange for a sewer easement across the elementary school property. At the time, it was going to be about four point six acres. We have since finalized all of the surveying and everything. And this is just for correcting the paperwork, uh, having on record that it is now three point seven acres.
So, it's three point seven, not four point six?
Correct.
Second. Okay, we've got a motion from Steve and a second from Tyson. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Motion passes. Unfinished business, I'm not aware of any new business, uh, bid award?
Yes, we have a bid award to Mid-South Builders in the amount of four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the Cannon Drive Water Main Replacement Project, project number WD twenty-six dash zero zero one, and authorize the city manager to execute any related documents. I believe we had about, I think, fifteen, uh, fifteen bidders, I believe it was, seventeen bidders for this.
So, we should have got a good price.
Yes, um, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, which is actually about three hundred thousand dollars over what we, uh, budgeted for this as part of our water bond. Recommend approval. And I'll, and I'll also say that this is, uh, our first payment, uh, our first bid award on our water bond projects as well.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion from Tyson, a second from Steve. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Item number two.
Item number two is consideration of a change order with RDJE for forty-nine thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars and twelve cents to pave Adams Street and to finish the paving Sycamore Street as part of the alleyway gravity sewer line Jifa project and authorize the city manager to execute any related documents. Uh, when Turnip Seed drew up the project plans for that, um, they did not include, uh, paving for Adams Street, which was, was partially torn up for the alley project. And they also did not measure Sycamore Street correctly. They thought that the area, um, along JK was, um, their right-of-way. And it is not, that is zero outlines there, so it's city property all the way up to their walls. And so, um, Jifa has agreed to include that as part of the project for an addition of forty-nine thousand dollars. And so, we can get those, get those paved. Recommend approval.
Second. Okay, we have, um, a motion from Steve, second from Tyson. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Uh, we need an executive session. Second. All right, we've got a motion from Nathan and a second from Tyson to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.